I'd like to call this meeting of the Bedford County Board of Supervisors to order. And we have Supervisor Bansley joining us by phone, just to make sure she's there. Charlotte?
I am here.
Great. All right. I'd like to welcome you here this evening. If you've got a cellphone, if you wouldn't mind to put that on silent or vibrate for the duration of the meeting, that'd be great. We will start with a moment of silence this evening. Thank you. If you'd stand with me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Next thing up is the approval of our agenda. Just a notation from the agenda that we've moved the appointments for the Library Board and the Board of Code Appeals to our meeting on June the 10th. Any other questions or changes for the agenda for this evening? If not, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the agenda.
All right. Have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
I'll say.
Second from Mr. Sharp. All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
And motion passes. Next up is our citizen comment period. I have one person that's signed up. There are, let's see, public hearings this evening for our budget and no other public hearings. So if, if there is a scheduled public hearing coming up in the next 90 days, you can choose to speak tonight, but you would not be able to share during that public hearing. If it doesn't matter to you, I'm gonna open it up there. But Mr. Cash, I know you came specifically to speak on an upcoming public hearing, but you are free to...
The agenda was to schedule this past, and when I worked with the planning commission, I was going to question what you might be doing tonight.
I do not know.
So will we be served again with a letter to give us an update on the next meeting? How about the first time?
I don't... I'm sorry? So would you, would you like to speak this evening, or you want to postpone until they have the actual hearing? Okay, all right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak during citizen comment period this evening? All right. We will close that and move on to our consent agenda. Mr. Hiss?
Okay. This evening, we had three items on the consent agenda. One is a resolution appropriating $25,000 for a Poplar Forest Trail and Road Improvements. Item B is a resolution approving a memorandum of understanding with the Sheriff's Office for Animal Control. And item C is a resolution authorizing the award of contracts for leachate hauling and maintenance services.
Okay. Any questions for Robert on the three consent agenda items?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I'm not familiar with the details of this $25,000 for Poplar Forest.
Would you like to have that moved to an action item so that more discussion can happen, or?
I, I would like to do that so we can handle more discussion on it.
All right. So we will move consent item 6A to 9D. All right. That leaves the other two items. Any questions regarding the other two resolutions?
What, what's the... I'm trying to read. Animal control thing with the sheriff.
Mr. Scott, we do not currently have an agreement with the Sheriff's Office to provide animal control services, which is a duty of the county. It's just something that has never been formalized, so this just simply formalizes what has been the practice in the county for many, many years.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, does, does that include the town?
The town is county, yes.
So this...
That, that does not include servicing the town.
Why does it not?
Is it anything in there about donuts?
Why does it not include the town?
Because the town has had its own animal control program and got rid of it trying to force it on the county. That's an ongoing issue.
Is that addressed in the...
Reversion agreement or the MOU? I'm sorry. I should let you finish your question.
I know it's addressed in the reversion agreement. Is it addressed in...
It simply says that the sheriff provides animal control services on behalf of the county.
It doesn't box him into interpretation? And what does the reversion agreement say?
It's, it's essentially the town is responsible for its own services at the time that reversion agreement was executed versus changing it unilaterally.
Okay. Just asking for clarification.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Make a motion that we approve B and C of the consent agenda.
Yeah. A motion from Mr. Scott. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Davis. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That brings us to the approval of the minutes from April 22nd and May 13th of 2024. There were some corrections noted for the May 13th notice. Line 452, Bedford County Supervisors with an S, Public Works. 453, the county in making any drawn, drawdown request for bond proceeds. Line 458, seconded by Supervisor Johnson. Line 465, Vice Chair Parker made the motion. Any other additions or corrections?
Mr. Chair, if there's no other additions or corrections, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of April 22nd and May 13th with the corrections as noted.
Okay. I have a motion for Ms. Parker. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Scott. All in favor signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. That brings us to our public hearing this evening to receive citizen comment on the fiscal year 2024, 2025 Bedford County and Bedford County School Board Budget. Ms. Anderson?
Hi. Good evening, everybody. So the purpose of tonight's public hearing, as you stated, is to review the proposed fiscal year 25 Bedford County and Bedford County School Board budgets. So with that, I'll just dive right into some highlights of each of those. The county's proposed general fund budget is $130,647,635, which does include several new or updated initiatives. The first of those initiatives is an increase in the per-call pay for volunteer fire agencies from $100 per call to $130 per call. In addition to that, finance staff and fire and rescue leadership are continuing to meet monthly to review base funding, per-call funding, and capital funding formulas for both volunteer fire and volunteer rescue agencies. And the goal is to implement additional changes no later than the fiscal year 26 budget, with the potential to implement some or all of those changes in the middle of the fiscal year 25 through an amended budget process. Also included in this budget is the addition of eight full-time positions and one part-time position. New positions include four new sheriff's deputy positions. Those would be field deputy positions specific to the road, a fire marshal inspector, a truancy specialist, and three administrative positions for public information, information technology, and the treasurer's office. Another initiative within this fiscal year 25 budget is health insurance increases of seven and a half percent, which were split between the county and employees. As of July 1, all insurance plans will now be on the Anthem Key Care Network, which is the national network and does offer a larger selection of, and network providers. Additionally, we have frozen the PPO plan, so no new entrants are allowed into the plan. But anybody who is enrolled in that plan for fiscal year 25 will be allowed to stay in there going forward. And finally, within the general fund budget, we have various pay adjustments for employees included effective July 1. County employees that received a 2% pay adjustment on December 1, as well as any employees hired after November 30th, will receive a 3% pay adjustment. Any county employees hired on or before November 30th, who did not receive the 2% adjustment on December 1, will receive a 5% adjustment July 1. And then finally, we had a number of targeted pay adjustments that were focused on departments that are currently experiencing challenges either attracting or retaining qualified staff. And those in depart, those departments included fire and rescue, E-911 communications, and our nursing home. The targeted pay adjustments included initiatives such as addressing minimum pay for hard-to-fill positions, alleviating pay compression between employees, and adding or updating incentive pay such as shift differentials. Okay. So the next fund that we will review is the Vehicle Replacement Fund, which has a proposed budget of $884,450. The proposed budget in place includes 10 new vehicles for the Sheriff's Office, one new vehicle for building inspections, and one new vehicle for natural resources. Additionally, county staff is working with our financial advisors to develop a funding model that would allow for the purchase of additional vehicles while leveling out the annual general fund contribution to this fund. That analysis is still in progress, but it has preliminarily been reviewed with the Finance Committee. Once the analysis is complete, we will bring that back to the Board of Supervisors. And then if approved, we will request an amendment to the Vehicle Replacement Fund budget to reflect any changes as necessary. But the hope is that we will be able to fund quite a few more vehicles with whatever plan we're able to put forth. Also included in the budget, the Capital Improvement, or CIP, Fund. There's a significant increase in that fund this year. The proposed budget is $42,846,864. The primary reason for the increase this year is due to the inclusion of plans for a new social services building with an estimated cost of $12 million, as well as the start of various renovations at Liberty and Stanton River High Schools with an estimated cost in fiscal year 25 of $12.9 million. All of those projects will be funded through the issuance of debt, specifically the literary loan, and then whatever debt vehicle we move forward with for social services. A few other key projects that are included in the proposed budget for CIP include the IT Core and Access Point Replacement Project, a reserve for fire and rescue air pack replacements, the construction of a storage building for the registrar, a reserve for future broadband projects, and the New London Business and Technology Center improvements. That last project specifically is dependent on, on the award of several different grants and would come back to the board for final approval before any funds are expended. Also, as a note, the fiscal year 25 fire apparatus replacements will be increased by a total of approximately $250,000 from what was provided in the budget ad to reflect updated pricing received in April of this year. As noted during the general fund budget discussion, staff are still working on updating the overall capital funding formula for fiscal year 26 and beyond. So that updated pricing that we received in April, as well as a 10% inflation factor year-over-year for the next seven years, is what we will use in helping us determine a financially sustainable model going forward. And then finally, some other funds that are included within our proposed budget for the county is the Law Library Fund, Nursing Home, and Solid Waste Funds. The Nursing Home Fund proposed budget is $8,899,034. This budget does assume that the nursing home will maintain a census of 86 residents, which it is currently, has at the moment, and that they will no longer receive quarterly intergovernmental, or what we call IGT, funds. The budget also captures the addition of value-based purchasing funds, which was a new revenue source that began at the end of fiscal year 23. Expenditure-wise, the budget reflects the health insurance increases that we discussed earlier, as well as the targeted pay adjustments designed to help reduce the use of agency nurses, which should hopefully decrease the overall operational cost if successful. Staff will continue to follow up on the status of the IGT funding and come back to the board in late summer, early fall with an update, as well as options for generating additional revenues. The Solid Waste Fund proposed budget is $5,543,630 for fiscal year 25. Everything is pretty much business as usual, and fortunately, the costs do seem to be stabilizing, at least for now. So nothing really big to report there. All right. So now we'll move on to the proposed school board budget. Their proposed budget includes an operating fund of $120,375,574. Nutrition fund is $5,092,243. The textbook fund is $1,096. And the maintenance contingency reserve is $4.4 million. These proposed figures include a contribution from Bedford County to the operating fund of about $34.7 million. However, based on the discussion during tonight's work session, this amount could be reduced, if the board so chooses, to $33.4 million due to additional state funds provided to the schools and the recently approved state budget. Those figures did not come in until after their original budget had been approved. In addition to operating funds, Bedford County does contribute $300,000 to the school textbook fund and $3 million in new growth funding to the maintenance contingency reserve. The additional $1.4 million included in the maintenance contingency reserve budget is from school operating funds redirected by the school board to prepare for the loss of reversion funding in a few years. And then additionally, the, all the numbers that we just mentioned are what's included directly in the school board's proposed budget. However, the county does also provide additional funding in the form of debt service payments for the schools. School debt service payments are budgeted in the county's debt department within the general fund budget to the tune of $7.4 million for fiscal year 25. So that is all I have for you tonight, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Anderson?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
The... .5 million dollars, I don't see that broken down like the other funds were in my notes that were sent to us, our packet.
Can you repeat that? It didn't come across.
The 5.5 million that's in the solid waste fund, that is not broken down in our packet like the other funds are? I was wondering where that was delegated to specifically.
That's the solid waste fund amount that I believe is maybe in the, for, I think it's in the first paragraph of the summary. There were no specific bullet points on the solid waste fund, however, because there weren't really any, any changes.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Excuse me. Three administration positions. Public information and IT and treasurer's office. All of those are... None of those are for people that would actually be doing the work. That's just administration?
They're just administrative in nature in terms of how the position is classified. If you give me just a second, I can tell you specifically what those positions are. I know the part-time position is an additional communications position to assist our current public information officer. The position in the treasurer's office, I believe, is a chief deputy position. So it would be somebody to assist with, I don't know if they'd be in the front or the back, but they would be assisting with processing of tax payments and all the things that the treasurer's office does. And then the IT position, I do believe that one is truly administrative. I think it's an administrative assistant.
But can I clarify with the IT position? That, that is not an additional position. That is...
It's correct. It's a new position, but in order to get that position, they had to give up another vacant position that had not been filled. So it's, it's really more of a swap.
But... I'm, I'm just trying to get my hands around the job description. In the IT, since you brought that up, Robert, in the IT, seems like we need personnel in there that can actually do IT work rather than administrate. I mean, we've noticed that over the years, that it's always been, seems to be a lack right there doing IT work. I'm not sure we should create an administration title with a job description. Like we're putting it in there, like it looks like money would be better spent. Put it on a person that has the knowledge and know how to do IT work and fix things and the computers and all that stuff.
Well, part of what this position will do is free up existing IT staff to focus more on the IT-related tasks within their office rather than the administrative tasks such as processing invoices for payment, scheduling various meetings with, I think, project management and that sort of thing. So it takes some, it takes current tasks off of existing IT staff to free them up to do more IT-related responsibilities. And they do still have another position that they could fill that is specific to IT, and I do not recall the title of it right off.
How about the public information? That's part-time?
That is part-time, and it's a communications and marketing coordinator. So it would help with things like maintaining social media, any press releases, that sort of thing, designing things for the website, so forth. So it's just a associate.
Well, excuse me. I don't know what's wrong with my voice. But anyway, I personally, I'm against the part-time public information. I don't think right now is the time to do anything there because of the tight budget we own. And I'm against the administrative and the IT description. I think it should be a IT, I don't know the proper title for it, underneath the administration where they work and do work on the computers and stuff, and not have a title where it releases anybody from doing IT work. I'm against those two items right now. In fact, I think we should freeze those two positions until y'all can come back with better alternates.
One thing I will point out, just as for full information and disclosure, the part-time public information position is being offset by some reductions in vendor pay for maintaining some websites. So the net cost to the budget for that position is only about $9,400. And then the IT position, that change would actually result in a reduction to the budget of about $8,000 because of the position swap.
Any other questions? Will we open up for public comment?
Do we... Make, like what I just talked about, that, how do we handle that?
Like, we, we don't vote on the adoption of budget until June 10th.
We vote on direction?
Well, we gotta have the public hearing, yeah, at first.
I have a question for Ms. Anderson. Um, the public relations, public information. So, so what you're saying is, is that position, is someone who has the skills to actually handle social media and, and I assume anything related to the county website or information that's being released from the county?
That, that's my understanding, that that is who would be targeted. And ultimately, I think everything would probably have to go through our current public information officer for final approval before it's put out publicly. But yes, they would be there to assist with the current duties of the office. to assist with the current duties of the office.
If I, if I can just add on to that, the purpose of that position, in addition to what was just explained, is also to free up time for the public information officer to pursue other means of getting the word out to the citizens. Most citizens consume information via video, and that's something that we want to enhance and do some more of, is some video work, and that would be something that the current PIO can spend a little bit more time and effort on versus some of the day-to-day minutia of social media work.
And you did say there's a net savings in this particular case?
Uh, there is some offset. This, this position is a net cost, net increase to the budget of nine thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars. The savings comes from an external contract that we currently have to maintain the fire and rescue website, but the idea is that this position would help with that and that that contract would no longer be needed.
Can, can you rephrase that to say that, that instead, I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, but in other words, you're saying that would eliminate the need for someone else outside the county?
Yes, sir.
To perform that job, and we would be handling it inside?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions at this point before we have the public hearing? Okay. So, I will, I don't have anyone signed up for it, but we'll open up the citizen comment portion for the budget. If there's anyone that'd like to speak for or against. Seeing no one, I will close that and bring it back to the board here. I don't, there's, says there's something to vote on, but there's not. No, the, the...
There's not, sorry.
Okay. There...
Yeah, I mean, the, the budget adoption would be at the June tenth meeting, so we'd have a budget resolution and appropriating language at that meeting.
At this meeting, though, the things that, excuse me, things we want, concerns or changes, we're, we're gonna have, we can do that at that meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think it's both. I mean, if you want to have a little bit of discussion tonight, that, that'd be, that'd be fine, or you can...
I was thinking we had it tonight.
Or, or you can just make the motion on the tenth, but tonight would be good, too.
So, is there any discussion on the items that Mr. Scott has brought forward this evening?
I, I have to say that I think a point Mr. Scott made in his comments, in which, if I'm correct, and correct me if I'm wrong in this, but I believe it would be wise, if, if you're gonna replace a position, fill it with someone who actually has the skills to do the job of IT rather than hiring an administrative assistant who, let's just say for the sake of argument, had, lacks those skills. I, I'm, I think when you've got folks in a, in a department, I, I don't know how many meetings they can possibly have, that you would need to have somebody pay someone to schedule for them, but it's not like they're the President of the United States, although he certainly needs his share of help. But I'd like to suggest that, that we reconsider that position.
Any other comment? I mean, I, these positions were vetted with the Personnel Committee, and I was reasonably assured, had a reasonable assurance that the administrative activities that our IT technicians were doing would be offset by this person, which frees them up to actually put their hands on, on the issues, as opposed to doing billing and administrative-type task. That, so I, I'm personally okay with it. I, I fully appreciate everything that you're saying on there, because I'd... But we do have that open position that would do that, that just needs to be filled. That's just what I think.
Yeah, I, I think that the specific position, so currently, there's three open positions in IT. One of them is a GIS technician that we're advertising right now and plan to fill with a GIS professional. There's an IT service-level position that's, that's also, that's also vacant, and we're wanting to fill that with a, similar to what Peter and staff do, to fill that with an IT specialist, you know, professional. The third position that's vacant, well, technically vacant, is a project manager position. I think the thought was, is that we have that temporarily filled on a contract basis that expires in about six months, and after that contract expires, the thought was, was to transition that project manager position into this IT administrative assistant role. But, but if we wanted to keep the project manager, we have plenty of work for project manager due to.
So, the person that's moving up to the administrative position, what do they do right now?
It, it wouldn't be, it, it's not a person, it, it's a, it's a vacant position, so...
I thought I heard somewhere along the line there was somebody who'd taken over.
Mr. Scott, you said moving up. Just so you're clear, this is administrative assistant, it's not administrator. So, it's gonna be a lower-level person than a IT specialist. If we were gonna hire an IT specialist for that administrative position, it would be a lot more expensive. It'd probably be twice as much as we're spending for this administrative assistant.
And, and I think maybe what you're referencing is the contracted position that we're currently temporarily filling that vacant position with, that when that contract's done, that employee goes away. It's just a contract for a temporary assignment. So, that'll go away, and then that's when that position gets freed up and can be converted to the administrative assistant. And then the IT specialist position would still be vacant and be available to be filled, which is similar to Peter's role.
Just to, for clarity, also, can we assume that, and I'm sure you have factored in the benefits pack, part of the package?
Mr. Chair, just for clarity, there's been two positions in IT, for IT personnel that we can't seem to keep filled.
Right.
So, the thought process was to take one of those and make it to this other?
Yeah, the...
So, there's really two positions that we are already funding, but they're vacant. And I think to Mr. Scott's point, which I do understand what he's trying to say, is we seem to have a lot of IT issues on a more-than-regular basis, and it seems to me that we need to keep those two positions for IT people, we need to get those filled, and I don't know what the issue is, but maybe instead of funneling and going into a different direction, the focus needs to be on IT, because it's like, on a weekly basis, something's wrong, something doesn't work, email's down, you can't take payments in the treasurer's office. I mean, it is something all the time, and quite honestly, it's not providing the level of service that we should be providing to the citizens. But I don't want to take an IT position away when we clearly need it, but I do understand to, to Mr. Scott's point, where we're not to the level of service in IT that I feel like we need to maintain.
For further clarification, there are three positions. One is just a contract-based one, that that's the one you're talking about wanting to convert, not the two open IT technicians.
Correct. It was not always a contract position, but it's currently filled that way.
So, just for clarity on, for me, because I'm Elizabeth, what is her job description?
She, she's the, she's the IT director, so she's similar to any other director-level position, so she manages the staff of the office, you know, helps watch after the budget, sets overall direction and scope of the different duties, does a little bit of project management, you know, personnel management, budget management, anything that a typical department head and director does, watch after contracts when they come due, work with procurement issues to get different bids and proposals and so forth.
Any other budget items that you wanted to discuss tonight prior to June tenth? Are there anything that come, are there any things that come up between now and the tenth? Can you share those with Robert, Ashley? Should we have a clean budget to vote on? All right, thank you. Moves us on to our action items. First one up is consideration of a resolution approving the submittal acceptance and appropriation of the Patrick Lehey Bulletproof Vest Partnership Grant, Resolution R.052-824-04. Sheriff Miller.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mr. Chair, Madam Vice Chair, and the board members. The sheriff's office is here tonight, and we have prepared a grant application to be submitted to the U.S. Department of Justice in the amount of forty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty dollars to purchase thirty-eight additional bulletproof vests for the men and women of the sheriff's office. If awarded, this will be our twenty-fifth award over consecutive years for our bulletproof vest. Priority is given to jurisdictions that have a hundred thousand population and less, less than a hundred thousand in population. The vest must be transitioned every five years. They have a five-year life is what they have, so we have to replace these every five years, plus for our new men and women that are coming on. This is a cost of a local cost of the vest, it's twenty-three thousand, nine hundred and forty dollars, it's a fifty percent match, and that match is coming out of the sheriff's office budget. Any other questions?
Any questions for the chair?
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
No, I don't have any questions.
No, that's fine. All right. Any discussion on the, from the board on the resolution?
Mr. Chair, if there aren't any comments or questions, I make a motion we approve Resolution R.052-824-04.
We have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Mr. Davis. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That brings us up to the consideration of a resolution initiating an ordinance text amendment regarding loitering and public demonstrations, Resolution R.052-824-05. Mr. Skelly?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and I won't cry over spilt water. Hearing some concerns from board members and in discussions with Sheriff Miller and Major Wilks, it was determined that we probably have some gaps in our ordinance concerning protection of public places from essentially unlawful gatherings. So, I took it upon myself to draft up two separate ordinance changes to our existing code, one of which concerns loitering in public places, and the other concerns public demonstrations and picketing. Thankfully, we've not had a real concern to date with those issues, but there have been isolated events, and I think from a number of years ago, the sheriff actually accommodated two separate groups who wanted to picket and actually gave them space on his grounds to do so in a peaceful manner, which also was incorporated in this, part of this ordinance. So, what is before you are those proposed ordinance sections, and simply asking for authorization to advertise those for public hearing and public comment.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Skelly? Any discussion amongst the board on this?
Mr. Chair, hearing no discussion, make a motion to approve Resolution R.052-824-05.
We have a motion for Mr. Sharp. Is there a second?
Second.
I believe that was Ms. Bensley. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bensley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That brings us to consideration of a resolution amending the Tri-Lakes Administrative Commission Intergovernmental Cooperative Agreement, Resolution R.052-824-06. Mr. His.
Okay. At a recent, in the April board meeting of TLAC, they adopted a resolution approving that this request be considered by the member jurisdictions. Campbell County has requested consideration of adding a citizen-at-large from Campbell County to represent their county on TLAC Board of Directors, but this citizen-at-large representative would only cast a vote in the absence of a, of a Campbell County supervisor or the administrator, who are already appointed members of the TLAC Board. Really where this stems from is that the other three jurisdictions who are members of TLAC all have citizen members, and they are voting members, but, so Campbell County wanted to add a citizen member who would only vote in the case of absence of the administrator or the appointed supervisor, so therefore Campbell County will only retain the two voting members, while the other jurisdictions will maintain their three.
But you mentioned a half a vote. What did, what were you referring to when you said they, that they would get a half a vote just a second ago?
I don't remember saying half a vote.
I didn't hear that. I wrote it down, when you said...
I think it was, wouldn't add a vote.
Add a vote.
Add a vote.
Oh, oh, oh.
All right.
Get the top down on that salara.
Huh? Sorry if I wasn't clear, but anyways, approval of the, the resolution agreeing to amend the intergovernmental cooperative agreement is recommended.
All right. Any questions for Mr. His on that?
Yes. What, how many citizen votes do Bedford and Franklin County have now?
We, we each have one, so, if, so we have three total votes.
So, Campbell County would have two-thirds of what we have, Campbell, Franklin County.
Correct, yeah. And, and that's a signifying by their...
Does Campbell County, I mean, they, they don't have one-third of the lake, though, do they?
Leesville. They're, they're mostly Leesville and Pennsylvania, yeah. They, they have two votes today, and they're, and the amendment would have them retain two votes.
So, they wouldn't increase the overall votes again? They would only, they would only, the citizens that you're adding would only vote if one of the others were not there?
Yes, and I mean, not, not throwing any, try not to throw anybody under the bus, that's relatively routine, that one of the two Campbell County members are not present, so I think...
Would you like to tell us which one?
No.
I was gonna say that, that an additional person to pinch hit for them would be very helpful at our meetings.
I don't have a problem with it, then.
That's probably a better way to put it.
Any other questions? All right, any other discussion?
As far as funding for TLAC, is, are the three counties mentioned equal in their funding?
No, it, it's all based on lake, frontage, mileage, so there is an equation that is broken out by that. So, I think Franklin County is the largest contributor, and we're second, Pennsylvania's third, and Campbell has a very small contrib-, financial contribution.
All right, any other discussion?
You and, Mr. Chairman, you and Robert, y'all are most active on this, is it y'all's recommendation that...
Yeah. I think it would be helpful to have someone consistently there from Campbell to talk about the Leesville Lake.
Yeah. Appreciate it. And I think, again, being consistent with the other member localities, having a citizen representative is always a good perspective to have as well, not just us government people. Yeah.
Entertain a motion one way there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve Resolution 052-824-06.
Okay, I have a motion from Mr. Johnson. Is there a second? Is there a second?
Second.
A second from Ms. Parker. This is a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes, motion passes. That brings us to consideration of a resolution appropriating 25,000 for Poplar Forest Trail and Road Improvements, which is Resolution R.052-824-01. Anything you want to share?
Yeah. So Poplar Forest installed a new 2.2-mile entrance road and trail system about two years ago, and what this request is essentially is about the volume of traffic and the use of both has really surpassed expectations. So they're requiring a rather substantial maintenance project before conditions deteriorate further. So they wanted to add additional layer of stone on the entrance road, parking areas in the steep sections of the multipurpose used trail. It's anticipated that this is a kind of a one-time project, that they wouldn't have to have to do this again for another four or five years. Last time, I've done a little bit of research, the last time Poplar Forest received any funding from the county was in 2019, which was also for $25,000. And the source of this expenditure is being recommended from the lodging tax reserve fund, which has an adequate, more than adequate balance to pay for this. And that lodging tax reserve fund is, should be spent on projects that are tourism-related expenditures. So that's basically what the request is, is to get some monetary assistance in order to help with this kind of capital maintenance project.
And just for clarification, these trails are open to the public without fee?
That's true, yeah. I mean, so it's used by the public in the general vicinity. It's also used by visitors as well, and they have some events on them, too.
Mr. Chair, I think this falls right in the guidelines of what the tax is designed for. I mean, this sounds to me like it's a pretty good fit. We don't struggle to spend that money by any means, but it's not a natural thing. We need to talk about it a lot when we prepare, because this one's easy for me.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I was disappointed, I guess it was last summer, when I took some people that were in town there. It used to be that the main entrance was off of Bateman Bridge Drive, and so that was Bedford, and so people would come in and out of Bedford. Now the main entrance is off of Enterprise Drive. So people, so this road, actually, I believe, that they're asking us for money for, is actually in Lynchburg. And now when people leave the main entrance of Poplar Forest, they're not going to forest restaurants or gas stations, they're going to Enterprise Drive in Lynchburg restaurants. So I was, I'm disappointed that these, when we gave the last 25,000, we were told we're going to have these great, you know, places where people in forest could walk well. It's actually in Lynchburg to get to those places now, because they've closed the Bateman Bridge entrance.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to retract my previous endorsement.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Actually, the trailhead is exactly where the road used to be. You park there on Bateman Bridge Road, and then that's the start of the trail, and it goes towards, towards Poplar Forest. So I just recently walked it myself. The vehicular entrance is off of Enterprise Drive, but the walking trails are actually off of Bateman Bridge Road, and that's where people park to start to walk towards Poplar Forest. And there was a tremendous amount of traffic back and forth when I was out there. Joggers, lots of people from the public utilizing that trail system, because it's, there's a nice tree canopy, and it's a very pleasant, cool shaded walk out to Poplar Forest and back.
I just know that the main entrance, when I was walking, when I was driving in it, so Bateman Bridge, where I usually was used to going into there, was closed, so I guess you can park there to walk, but it was closed, so I had to drive around to Enterprise Drive and then go in that way. And I saw a lot of people walking along the side of that entrance. I was just very disappointed that they changed the entrance to go in and out of Lynchburg. And I think Lynchburg was asked to do this, and they haven't given any money towards it.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I've heard Mr. His say more than one occasion that we have an abundance of cash in that fund that's paid by our hospitality folks here in Bedford County. And I got to say that, you know, every one of us that goes to a restaurant in Bedford County pays that tax when we eat there. So in addition to sales tax and the food that we eat, we've got to pay an additional tax. And it's almost, I'm not trying to cast aspersment on anyone, but to me, it's almost like a lie. And there are a lot of folks, especially in today's world, I mean, you can't go somewhere and look on a menu and find a hamburger for less than $12 to $15. And let's take 5% of that, or I think that's the accurate amount that is added on to that in-net cost of food for these folks. And these restaurateurs who are in need of business, I really and truly will sit here and tell every single person that they are not benefiting directly from this. And I think it's confiscatory. And furthermore, so I'm opposed to this tax that we're levying on our restaurant and hospitality people, and furthermore, I'm opposed to spending this $25,000 for these folks at Poplar Forest. I've run a business every day of my life since I got fired in 1982, and I've had to figure out how to charge enough money to keep my business afloat, to pay the folks that work for me, to pay my taxes, insurance. People ask me all the time, how can you charge what you charge for what you do? And I'm happy to share with them, you know, until they finally say, I've heard enough. And my point of this is this, and particularly since if the city of Lynchburg is not willing to cough up anything and pay for this, I'm not saying that's reason for us not to, but I think the reason for us not to support this is, is I feel like the folks that have run Poplar Forest, they need to do a better job managing their resources. Perhaps they need to charge more. I don't know what the answer is. I'm not privy to their books. But before I would vote in favor of giving them a dime, I think it's past time that we on the board of supervisors start demanding that folks tell us how they're spending their money. So I don't support this.
Just for clarification, you've referenced the meals tax, which is, this is the lodging tax.
Right.
Okay. Just want to make sure.
Mr. Chair, I just have a clarification question. Is the money that they're requesting to support a maintenance project for the 2.2-mile entrance road, is that primarily what they're asking for, the entrance road? And if that is, if that's the case, then I can certainly understand what Ms. Bansley's talking about. But if it's trails, it seems like the trail, you, Mr. Sharp talked about getting on the trails from Bateman Bridge. I don't know, because I've never been there, honestly, but if it's, if the primary cost that they're asking for is for the entrance road, then I'm going to have to agree. I think Lynchburg needs to be donating to this.
Yeah, just to clarify, and I don't have it broken out as to what the project expenses are. It's just, the request is to help with the 2.2-mile road, parking areas in the steep sections of the trails. We can always ask for them to, we can always ask for them to break that out. We could, I'm not aware if Lynchburg is funding a request or not. Last information I had was that they were, it was still under consideration, so we could...
Well, perhaps.
I guess there's three options, either approve, deny, or table pending more information.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we table Resolution R.052-824-01.
We have a motion from Mr. Johnson to table this item. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second from Ms. Bansley. This would be a roll call. Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Ms. Bansley?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Parker?
Yes.
Chair votes yes. This will be tabled for further information on the breakdown. All right. Let's see. That moves to board committee reports. You've got a finance committee breakdown in there. Is it anything that you would want to share from that?
Let me get to that second. Well, we did talk about the Poplar Forest, so we just talked about that a little bit. We also talked about the rescue squad, ambulance replacement. There's been a couple squads who have requested financial contribution. There's no action recommended at this time pending further review, which we talked a little bit about during the work session, about finding some additional funds and reviewing what some staff recommendations are. But the main part of the meeting was meeting with our financial advisors from Davenport to review a purchasing strategy for vehicles, sheriff vehicles, and other county fleet vehicles, using a debt service instrument versus cash. So anyways, going forward, the committee received that information, asked good questions, also asked Davenport to review how that strategy works with fire apparatus and ambulance replacements to see how that might correspond with those purchases as well. So once we received that information, the thought was to bring that back to the board of supervisors likely in July in order for a work session to discuss this in further detail.
So we're down to board comments. Is it anything that anyone would like to share this evening?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to say, in the, this past weekend, Memorial Day weekend, I was privileged to attend six different events, you know, over the total weekend, and I don't think I've ever been as impressed as I was with Bedford County's patriotism, especially among our younger people. They just, seems to me like a switch went on, and people were appreciating Memorial Day for what it was while we have it, and I was just, I was very proud to be a member, citizen of Bedford County this weekend.
Anyone else? Congratulate all of our graduates from Stanton River, Liberty, Jefferson Forest, and Smith Mountain Christian, and any other schools that were out there. Let's see. Mr. His, anything else from administrator?
I did. I have two quick items. At our communication center, 911, this past week, the Motorola computer aided dispatch and record management system went live last week. There was nearly two years of implementation and preparation so that we can make that as seamless as possible, and it was a very good implementation. You know, we went through one 911 director transition, and our new director, Christine Giglio, had to take over that project management duties in November and did a wonderful job landing the plane, so to speak, for this implementation, and I thought that was great. There was a lot of also hard work over the last couple of years, not only by 911, but also by fire and rescue, sheriff's office, town police, our GIS division, and of course, just 911 operators. Many hours of staff training, configuring the system. Again, like I said, it went live without really any major hiccups, just a few internal things that have, for the most part, have already been corrected. To my knowledge, there was no impacts to citizen response, which is outstanding and is a great barometer of what we were trying to accomplish with that implementation. And Motorola has been responsive and helpful and willing to be flexible to work to correct the system as well with any small changes need to be made. So overall, a great team effort and a good implementation. Second thing I wanted to mention, just have a little certificate here that, well, and that, too. It's a, John Putney accepted an award on behalf of Bedford County for our project management and resident involvement for broadband. He attended the broadband together 2024 conference last week. Now, there's not many other counties who are really putting the resources towards broadband that Bedford County is, and we're recognized for that with a broadband manager position that John fulfills, with the work that Eric Smedley, our county engineer, does, our public information office with Shelley Basinger, finance office, county admin, and we have two supervisors on a broadband committee who are actively engaged with this. DHCD and the state have recognized that we really put together a team to get this thing done that most other localities aren't doing, so hence, we got that recognition. You know, our focus is still getting broadband to the unserved and underserved as quickly and responsibly as possible. Just some highlights from a citizen perspective, because this is also part of the award, too. You know, the board of supervisors have worked on a project re-scope to move some projects along that were sort of languishing, and really, nobody else in the state has done that to the success that we have. You know, we identified a problem, and we attacked it with a re-scope, and that is proving dividends. Broadband manager does routine newspaper updates. We have had a couple high-quality public kickoff events that the state representatives have attended and have given us a great positive feedback on. We have ongoing social media posts, website redesign, also with some good GIS maps on there, and we have a team member taking daily phone calls and emails from citizens wanting to know what's going on. So that's been a great, you know, single point of contact that I think the citizenry has really come to enjoy. And as a DHCD state representative said, we've come a long way from the previous wireless broadband project and that Vatty grant, and they recognize that, that we've come a long way from that. So anyways, we kind of get the career, the career recognition award, too. So anyways, it's just interesting, since I've been here five years and got on a little bit, started with the wireless project as well. You know, we used to beg internet service providers to come to Bedford County, and now it's interesting, we have internet service providers competing with each other for every street they can get. They were literally arguing whenever streets that people had been ignored for years and years and years and years. So anyways, we still have work to do, but we're trending in the right direction, and our state representatives recognize that, too.
Mr. Chairman, I appreciate that, and I love to hear that report, and I would just ask that in the interest of my age, I don't know about anybody else, but ask our county administrator to not start his comments about that with our, with John Putney has accepted. Because when he said that, I kind of lost me for 15 seconds, my heart spiked, and I thought, John Putney has accepted another job.
No, we have him under contract.
Yeah, we wrapped that up a couple weeks ago.
I didn't want to, I didn't get my board comment in just briefly. I just want to pat John Sharp on the back for picking up on that $1.3 million in savings and making sure that we direct our money wisely in this county.
Anything else, Mr. Skelly?
Nothing further at this time, Mr. Chair.
All right. Upcoming meetings, we've got, oh, we've got our annual meeting with the Cooperative Extension on June 10.
I'll be done with hay by then.
Yeah. And that will be at 5:00, and a regular meeting at 7:00, which that night is also the budget adoption night. And then June 24th, work session and meeting, and then we only have one meeting for July, which is 22nd. And Mr. Scott has made a motion to adjourn. Is there a second? I think Mr. Davis said a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.